Good evening, I call the Brandon Select Board to order for November 11th. As we get underway on Veterans Day, if you want to take a moment to thank all the veterans, we have something in the room tonight. Thank you for your service to all the veterans. First item is agenda adoption, is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Mr. Coolidge moves, Mr. Wyman seconds. If not all in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye. Any opposed, say no. You guys have it. Item two, approval of the minutes of October 28th. Mr. Wyman moves to approve, Mr. Coolidge seconds. Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes?
I don't want correction for addition to the minutes. This is 7B.
7B.
Prior to the vote, at Tim Giles, I had asked Dave Appleton if he had reviewed the warrant. And then we voted, and he had given, when it confirmed that the warrant was in order.
Could you add that in, Sean? Any other errors or omissions? If not all in favor of adoption as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I got no ideas, do you know?
Okay. Item three, the Town Manager's report, Mr. Appleton.
I'll be brief. Segment six, everything's covered in snow, so there's not much to report. They've been...
Well done.
So, just quick, segments E and F, they've been doing the imprinted asphalt traffic islands. Initiation of construction for concrete scare, stairs at various residences and businesses, and punch list items such as curbing joints and other items like bricks and things that are, need to be reset. Segment D, installation of guardrail and railings on retaining wall adjacent to Brick's Lane. C, this is upcoming, I'm sorry, I probably should have said that, that didn't happen this week, it's gonna happen next week. Completion of retaining wall adjacent to B-HOP as well as associated railings and walk brick banding. B, continued improvements in Central Parkway, and if you notice that the landscape trailer has left, so I'll flush this back. Brick marble granite walkway surfaces and installation of raised crosswalks. Segment A, completion of drags and miscellaneous cleanup. And we tried to do some line striping this weekend, in general here, and the weather was not really helping us out. Most of the permanent striping is down, so we will be able to turn the traffic lights back on. There will be some town lines on side roads and stuff through the spring, and they will be doing the rest of the permanent striping in the spring.
Before you go on, are we gonna have a conversation about traffic lights at the select board level, or is this not the case?
Well, we could. We're gonna have to turn them back on per federal highway.
Right.
So, there was quite a bit, there were quite a bit of issues with the timing on the side roads, which were addressed, and the programs have been adjusted. So, once we turn them back on, they should be properly working. I know Phoebe O'Neill will be up here when we do that, so, but I think after our project is completed and the town gets to take the lights over, we can have all the conversations we would want, I would think.
And that point will be in the winter?
Well, we won't really be done, you know, we don't want to close the project out until we're happy with everything that's been done, so I would say.
Further, next year, probably. So, when will the light feature?
I think there's a meeting with, with the design engineers here like this week to set a time up to turn them back on, so. They wanted to have them on before snow falls, but that didn't work out so well.
It would be great to understand the latitude or the amount of discretion that we're allowed in, in making that decisions about how to run, because I know, living on Carver Street, there's a lot of different opinions about that. And it would be great to just have people understand what degree of latitude there is. I mean, maybe there's very little.
Well, yeah, I think we have to, we have to look back now that those stops that took a while were off of Route 74 when Union and Carver actually went around the south side of the park and not Route 7. So, it's sort of, you know, compressed where the traffic stops. And we have had quite a few near misses out there this year, and we did have two accidents in the intersection itself from cars just darting out or not stopping.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's pros and cons of it, but we can certainly figure that out.
You could be sure there's gonna be lots of opinions.
There usually are.
So, will those be operating this winter?
That's the plan, one will by the end of the month will have them on.
When everything's all finished?
Well, what we're waiting for is for both lanes to be open and in segments A and B, so there wasn't alternating traffic. An alternating traffic would, the lights would have been a mess. So, now that they're out of the roadway down there, that's what we wanted to turn them on.
But I think we do want them on before the end-to-end, because it was explained to me that we want them on before the end-to-end, because if there's any adjustments to be made while the project's still going on, then the project pays. If it's all over and then we want to adjust, we pay.
We want them on, yeah. Well, that's what, you know, that's what happened the first time they came on. They didn't work properly, we shut them down, they got a redesign. So, they did find out there were timing issues for the side roads, so. Union Street sidewalk, the retaining wall has been constructed and the sidewalk has been poured. The paving was scheduled for the end of this week, so we'll see what happens. It's not looking good with the weather. Supposed to be nine degrees tomorrow night. Other happenings, the town of Brandon hosted the Vermont Community Development Association Fall Conference last Tuesday right here at the Town Hall. About 63 attendance, attendees from around various funding and state agencies. They came together on the topic of a look down the pipeline, improving community infrastructure. The day ended with a walking tour showcasing the work from the past five years of Brandon, led by VCDI Board members Bill Moore, Mr. Bernie Carr, and myself. All in attendance were mightily impressed with the transformation of Brandon to the point of nearly outright envy, as Bill Moore states. The Town Hall was lauded as an amazing space and has been put on the map as top-notch space in which conferences can be held. I attended the FEMA risk mapping assessment and planning discovery meeting in Middlebury on October 29th. I brought Mr. Beazusi with us, with me. And we did have an opportunity to speak to a couple of the FEMA folks at the end of the meeting on some of our changes in town, specifically Newen Road and the overflow culvert. So, we had to do an online survey, just to address those problematic spots, and that's what we did, sent the survey out. So, when they come see us, they'll already have a head up on when needs to be done and when needs to be looked at. I attended the Fall Town Manager Conference in Norwich last Thursday and Friday. Topics were working with your select board, working with the 2020...
Did you present on that one?
Yeah, yeah. Working on the 2020 census, marketing your community and framing your story, and how safe are your roads. They're all really good topics this time, and so, I'm hoping that actually the road one was done by Stu Johnson, who was the road commissioner in Cornwall for a number of years, and he works for Bad Roads now. So, I'm gonna try to get him to come speak to you guys. I was hoping to try to get him before the budget season. He had some really good insight on road maintenance and things that board should look at, and so, it was really informative. And that's all I have this evening.
Questions for the Town Manager from the board? Mr. Coolidge?
No.
Questions from the public for the Town Manager?
Yeah, I have a question, first on the sidewalks. I noticed the one out here is painted white stripes.
Crosswalks?
Yeah, some of the others are the stamped brick. Are they gonna, do they gonna have like pedestrian signs beside them all? There's a kind of an inconsistency because of this.
Well, there's an inconsistency because this is not done over here. Where the bridge slab is, it's gonna have to be all redone and then permanent...
That's kind of what I figured.
Permanent crosswalks will be installed.
That's what I figured. So, but they're all gonna have pedestrian signs posted on either side?
Yeah.
And there is, wow.
They will have pedestrian signs.
Because it's all side mark, okay.
Mr. Carr?
I believe the imprinted ones will also have a white stripe. That'll be a combination of white striping, imprint, and then the different color.
Is that kind of hard to spot?
Right, right. As, as the road lights up, the asphalt roads lighten up, they'll be more, they'll stand out more, and white line will help too.
That was, that was one of my concerns. And then a question on the FEMA submit, for obvious reasons, I have a vested interest in what's happening with new mapping and everything. So, what is the town submitting by the 27th for that?
Town already submitted, we had to do an online survey.
An online survey?
For problematic areas or areas that we saw that needed to be remapped.
Okay. And so that includes the new culvert?
The overflow culvert and Newen Road were the two.
And what about the improvements to Route 7 and the storm drainage?
That wouldn't do anything for flood management.
Storm drainage doesn't?
No. No. FEMA's gonna base it on elevation, mostly elevation. They'll assess it, and that's, that's what they do, so.
So, would it be behoove me at all to submit anything to Mr. Olson, a certificate of elevation for my property?
Can if you want. I mean, we're, we're just doing it for our town infrastructure issues and problematic areas that, that we've seen, and, you know, we're hoping that the overflow culvert is going to make some changes in the downtown area, so.
And then with, with that submittal, do you submit like a maintenance program for the culvert, maintenance program for the drainage?
All we're doing is trying to send them information that might change the zones for the FEMA flood mapping.
Okay.
It's already, we did a survey, I don't know, a week after we gave them information.
And they paid for the culvert, so they ought to have a lot of that already, but, all right, these are just rare events, so we take advantage of it.
So, while we're on that topic, I did want to, for the record, I did want to apologize to Mr. Buehler for, I've apologized to him in person, but I want to apologize for the record. For his question at the last select board meeting, I was in error in how I answered it in terms of the FEMA meetings that were October 29th and October 35th. I was glad that we did have town representation at both of those meetings, though Mr. Appleton was present in Middlebury on the 29th, and Mr. Giles was present in Rottlin on 30th. So, I don't think that the letter was perhaps as clear as it might have been in terms of was it going to affect specific parcels, where specific map change is going to be made, but I guess I should have heard on the side of recommending that we do participate at that level. But I'm glad that we did, we knew that we were going to at this time.
Well, and I appreciate you bringing that up in your apology. I actually, I think the newspaper article, Rottlin Herald, was more clear than the letter itself, so.
Mr. Giles?
So, my, my take from the meeting that I went to was that FEMA is under a five-year program to actually refine the maps significantly. I mean, they were, the examples they showed us in this presentation were, you know, crude hand drawings from way far out to where they're suggesting there will come a time in three or four years before they get to the end, when they're gonna be having each town have granular maps to within six feet of where the flood plain goes, where people will be able to come in and see buildings and say, oh, you know, my building is either in this or out of this. And, and what they're trying to do is aim limited resources at going after problem areas. And that's why they contacted townspeople and people that understand where in their town they feel like there are areas that need analysis, because they're gonna do the analysis. It's not gonna cost us anything, as I understand.
No.
Right. And, and so it's a, it's a fairly long project, and I didn't want you to feel like you missed the vote or something, because I think this is something where, you know, if we happen to stumble onto something else that is likely to be, you know, incorrect on a flood map, we could tell them, and they would put it into their stream of work and determine where in their priorit list it came from.
Well, I saw the November 27 deadline, and that just kind of...
I understand where your question came from.
And, and we have four condos in our building. Well, we have three condos, but four policies, because one covers the building and the rest covers the property. We bought it all at the same time, but one of them's grandfathered and the others aren't. I mean, it's, it's all over the map, that, and it makes no sense. So, we've been trying to get all of this for quite a while, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I would say that there's, there's two meetings that has just, that have just happened, you know, these are extraordinary in terms of what Mr. Giles has alluded to in terms of the length of time that this project is gonna be and the intensity that it's going to be working at. This is not the normal way that a flood map gets updated. And that the town, Mr. Appleton was certainly diligent, and the town was, and still is, going through the routine slash normal way of implementing the flood map.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Other questions for the Town Manager? No one else? Okay. Item four, public comment and participation. Anybody with anything on the agenda tonight? Mr. Wyman?
No.
Mr. Giles?
Yeah. On our budget meetings. Sure we can't do those before the select board meetings? I don't know why, clearly anybody was against it. Because everybody's here, and we all agreed on it, I thought we kind of did. I don't know why we changed it.
No, what we agreed on were separate meeting nights. And then it was suggested that maybe we change it to doing it before the select board meetings. And there's something to be said for that, but there's something to be said against it, which is that it's gonna make a very long night.
Yeah, I think that's the nature of where we, the conversation went at, which was just the two, two meetings that were, will be for a long time.
I figured we're here.
We're here, but I think in hour number three or four, we're not always making the most courteous decisions, and sometimes we're not making, we don't have the best judgment, as we would in maybe hour one or two.
Are the other nights a problematic view?
No. The Mondays are a little easier. I thought, didn't you email everybody, and we all thought, we started with them, that before the meetings are okay, and Tracy said, we'd get here really good, and it's the same with me, but I thought, I'll figure I'll be here anyways.
And I, I personally don't mind being here, I just don't know if I can make it here at 5:00. Right? You mind?
And what I represented last time is that, while I would make it to whenever you have the meetings, Tuesdays are better for me. And I was just looking to balance everybody's needs on this.
So, the way we left it, right, at the last, we decided on November 25th, we are gonna come in early, right? And then we have December 3, 10, 17, and we know that, I think we suggested maybe we might have the chief of police come on the November 25th Monday. And we might have the town clerk come on the December 10th meeting. And that leaves the 3rd and the 17th for the other departments. I think that's a reasonable compromise. I mean, do you wanna discuss it further? Happy to discuss it further, but I just want to make sure that that's where we are right now, is four meetings, one before a board meeting, and then three on Tuesdays.
So, can I just chime in on that? My only, my reason for bringing this up was, I'm already here on Mondays, I don't usually go home. Employees that, you know, that do come to the select board meetings would then come to a Tuesday meeting. And I know there's been some concern about some of us going to too many night meetings, so that was my only reason for trying to consolidate into one night. And, you know, seeing as how we're already here, I do think that it would give us more of an opportunity to sort of give an update to the public on our select, in our select board meetings, on what we're doing with budget. Because we, you know, we usually do try to touch a little bit on budget updates while we're trying to, so. But, I mean, it's, it's up to you guys, and thought it might be easier to throw everything on Monday.
Play your board.
Take some others, three. My preference would be Monday, but that's just one person.
Any preference, Mr. Giles?
Well, I have a similar statement on Tuesdays, it's just an easier day for them. Not trying to be problematic, but it's the same, just a small purpose.
I think since we had a full board at the last meeting, and we did come to a compromise of a Monday and three Tuesdays, I'm inclined to leave it where we left it. Any objections?
Yeah, but I'll deal with it.
Okay, thank you. Further public comment and participation from the public now. Anybody have anything that's not on the agenda you'd like to talk about? One more time, anybody with anything to say? Okay. Item five, Mr. Appleton?
I have one more thing. I received notice on Friday afternoon when I was in my Town Manager Conference that I had applied a few months back through, for some more storm water management, some of those stuff that we did with the townwide watershed plan. And we were awarded 100% grant through Agency Natural Resources again for moving forward with looking at the issues on Pearl Street and Cap 841's parking lot, specifically close to the waterfalls at the bottom of the parking lot. So, we'll be, I'll be informing you more on that towards mitigation.
What are the storm water issues on Pearl Street?
So, when we had, when we had watershed coming into the storm water master plan, they came and watched flows, during rains and everything, and thaws. And Pearl Street was just one of them where there were some issues with standing water. Yeah, so, and I think we've got like six other kind of big spots, and we said, we'll see if we could tackle two on this one, so.
Well, that's great news. Thank you for the great news. Item five is a revolving loan. Mr. William F. Moore, economic development officer.
No, I just want to read a letter from, and send your, your pro tag before the public. On April 25th, July 25th, and October 29th, the Brandon Revolving Loan Fund Committee met to consider loan class from the principles of the Ripken Mountain Distillery. The Ripken Mountain Distillery has nearly completed the conversion of the former Shapiro's retail space into distillery, tasting room, and bar space representing a significant investment of private sector money into a leased space to create another destination business for the town of Brandon. Having started the process of conversion, permitting, and construction nearly one year ago, the principles are on the cusp of opening. This loan represents the gap funding that will help a startup business to open after substantial personal investment, which is one of the key missions of the revolving loan fund. The members present voted unanimously to approve a $25,000 loan with the Ripken Mountain Distillery. Terms of the loan, 3% rate, amortizes as a 90-month loan to the balloon at 36 months. Collateral will be security interest in the assets and equipment associated with the business, and specifically, first security interest in the still bulk tank inventory change. So, I think tonight I can hear with, to the principles. We have Rick Carroll and Sherri Williams that are here to answer any questions you guys might have about their loans being approved by our committee.
I just want to thank you for the completeness of the documentation you provided, and thank you for working with the revolving loan committee, who actually does the underwriting part of it with Mr. Moore here, and by the time it comes to the board, it's kind of a vetted situation. So, thank you for being here tonight to introduce the... Do you want to stand, say for the camera, or for the public, or for the board, about the business that you're, you know, that you're about to open?
I mean, if you have any questions, I mean, we've got about 180,000 invested right now. We're, the 25,000 will get us our, pay for our permits and our stock, that'll finish us. We're in contracts, we're all set, we're selling the CB, the biggest CBD oil guy in the state. We're selling to other breweries, because that value, you know, they don't brew, they blend. So, we're selling bulk, and our product is a little different, so it's pretty hot. I mean, instead of doing corn mash, we're doing grain and sweet feed, which is molasses, it's a softer, it's a good sale. And we've already been all over the place for the last six months, and I'm hoping to make a quarter million in my day soon, you know, it's looking good.
What do you think you're gonna open?
Couple weeks. We should have, our, next week is our inspection, they're just waiting for the kitchen to get finished, because we're, we even got food also. We're gonna, we're gonna start in the deli, we're gonna go slow. I just, I gotta be able to keep up, and brewing, I mean, it's 300 gallons a day brewing, and two ships will be 600 gallons, so my biggest money bringing in is gonna be selling bulk. Not, not so much the bar, not so much the liquor store. If it goes great, great, I'm not counting on it. I needed a plan to be, to get my money back, to get the money back, I mean, number one. But I'm looking into fuel too. There's people who want to buy for fuel purposes too. If I can keep up, I'll do that. Right now, it's at the point I don't know if I'm even able to keep up with the other distilleries that want to buy 1,000 gallons a month, and plus the CBD oil wants to buy a thousand dollars a month. That's 60 grand a month, just in bulk. After taxes and everything, it comes up to $45,000 profit. This is something that's got laid in my lap, I was happy about it. I mean, somebody else that's already put it at the other end of the state happened to tell me, I happened to be at a convention, you know? So, I know, I learned, you know? So, I'm hoping it's gonna work, you know, so.
And using branded water?
Use it, it's on the bottle.
On the bottle?
It's on the bottle. Won awards, best water in the state, it tells the whole thing, it's got the seal, I'll have to show you, give you a thing to put the town office, a glass plaque, you know? But, yeah, it's on, it's on the, it's on the label, on the back.
And what are typically the size trucks that will be coming and going with these bulk ships?
That's, it's just me with my truck, all it is is totes.
Oh, I see.
They're 500 gallon totes, I'll be taking them two at a time with my trailer.
Yeah.
That's all.
Sounds great.
I don't want to get that big. I don't want to get that big. When that time comes, I'm gonna go on Exchange Street in Middlebury, keep this place. Go on Exchange Street in Middlebury, that'll be five years down the road, you know? Yeah, I'm not, not in Brandon, I don't want to get that big. If it becomes where I'm doing that for, knock on wood, hopefully I'll be on Exchange Street where I can...
Or perhaps even in our industrial court.
We got some land we're gonna have.
Yeah, but no.
That's right, wait, wait, because we have water sewer out there, we can talk about some of that land once you get there.
You are hired.
You don't, you don't, you don't want to go there.
Before Mr. Moore digs himself a hole, he cannot come out, what's the pleasure of the board on the moment first?
I make monthly excepted.
Mr. Wyman moves to approve, and Mr. Coolidge seconds. Any further discussion? If not all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. You guys have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good luck.
Best of luck with your enterprise.
At least tell me you do this.
You got me, Joe.
We should have a board meeting here.
Item six, Mr. Moore knows, there's no need if you have other things to do. Item six is approval of a clean water and irrigating water loan for Park Street.
Everybody stop now.
So, Mr. Appleton, do you want to introduce this? I see there's two loans, one 870,000 and one 540,000.
So, this is our construction funding for revolving loan for water and sewer for the Park Street project. This is the next phase in our, in the use of revolving loan money in the state. I also put before you for this information online here, the agreement that we signed with the Fire District back a few months ago, that does show their obligation to pay on the water portion of it. We have to be one of the, one of the folks on the agreement, because we are technically a municipality. It's a very similar agreement that we've had with segment six as well, that Fire District pays their portion of that.
Is the, is the water bond, the larger or not?
Yes. More testing, I would guess, might be, might be the reason for that. So, and before my time, I'm sure there was a similar agreement in place for when the water line was done. water line was done, six or seven years ago.
The option eight?
Yeah.
Page one.
Right, option eight, wasn't it?
Page one. It was not the IO at that time. The only part of segment six.
Early segment six.
Paid for a segment six month.
Pleasure, the board. Thank you. I will second your motion, Mr. Coolidge. So the motion and a second to approve these state revolving loan funds for clean water, which is the wastewater, and the drinking water, which is the one with the Fire District. Is there further discussion? So this is a project we've already approved in concept, and further than in concept? This is just a funding mechanism?
This is. So if you guys remember when we saw the sort of initial application that came to, it had like the six steps on it, and, so you have the preliminary engineering, the design, it was all, all the little increment loan amounts built up to construction, so.
Motion is made and seconded. It is the first discussion. If not, all in favor of approval of both of these bond, state revolving loan funds, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Item seven, appointment of an alternate representative for the state revolving fund wastewater collection systems.
So, we did one of these for, Union Street?
I think so.
I'm trying to think of what the other one was, but, no, I know what it was for. It was for Park Street. This one is for the, we had to do that 1272 order after we had the sewer line break, which required us to do more engineering on the wastewater plant. So, this one, this one would be for, we still have to have an alternate for revolving loan accounts on the primary, so requesting that, that Jacqueline's ability to alter.
And this again, like the last one, this is someone to furnish information to the state.
Yes.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Making the motion.
Mr. moves to approve, Mr. Wyman seconds. Any discussions?
Yeah, I just have a seemingly innocuous comment, and yet, is this a form letter that was sent out that we just filled in, or did we type this up?
No, they send us the form and we add the town of Brandon's select board.
Because there's, there's a significant amount of illogical, irrational sentences that bother me. I mean, first of all, it says, "The town of Brandon's select board is legislative body of the advocate hereby authorized Jacqueline's..." And it truly authorizes, right? Because it's present tense, we're authorizing her.
Well, when I sent it to them, you would already have authorized it, so, but it is form.
Well, and then it says, "This is a N change in authorized representative," and it's, it's a change.
I can currently know there...
And the last thing is, it says, "If change in authorized representative, they are replacing Gero Brulette," and it just should be, "They are replacing Gero Brulette." It's just annoying. I find, you know, grammatical problems to be obnoxiously, and they can be legally problematic, because ultimately, if you have to, you know, defend something, it didn't make any sense when we signed it. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll get off.
I can certainly pass this information on to the bond bank.
Thank you so much.
Is this the bond bank's letter?
Yeah.
As you clearly see, I feel much better.
I can probably show you the email of what the form is that they sent us, and, you know. I tried actually deleting the and and the, the slash, and it wouldn't delete.
Thank you.
Should we type our own grammatically correct versions?
I would, I think it shows better on our town, that we have like a, a legible, you know, um...
Learned.
A literate town. It's kinda like when we send out notes that are, that are, that have grammatical problems going through, it just takes away the professionalism of our whole here here. Like, better for who? And I guess it's not that, I guess the other thing, the last thing I would say is, that it's not that hard. It's like, it would take two seconds to retype this. I'll type it even if you want.
I don't care, Tim. I, I would be more concerned about, you know, the bond bank would like you to retype their form.
No, I get the feeling that legally isn't, that was just fine.
Very good. That was an excellent discussion. All in favor of signing the alternate authorized representative, Jacqueline Scott Bella, for the, not Park Street, this is for the wastewater.
Water collection system.
Wastewater. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. We will execute that, perhaps a couple of ways. Okay. Item eight, the warrants. Did I skip something?
No.
I, I move that we, that we accept the first warrant, her both warrants. Can we just, can we vote?
Uh, we usually can't.
No, we can't, just to trace.
We can, we can this time.
We can this time?
Yeah.
Okay.
We gotta stay on welcome.
Okay. You can do both.
Good, but I, I move to make...
But you gotta say the number.
Okay. I move to accept the warrant dated November 11th, 2019, for $1,31,260.21. And I also move that we accept the warrant for Route 7 construction, November 11th, 2019, for $538,488.68.
All second. Motion by Mr. Giles, second by Mr. Coolidge. Is there any discussion on either of the warrants?
I would just like to say that out of our warrant, $960,000 of it is to the school.
Right. Mr. Atherton, correct observation, good observation.
So, I, I have one item that I circled with a question mark on it.
Sure.
Because I, I think I figured out that all the football thing was some kind of deposit money that was just going back to people.
I can speak to that, Mr. Giles.
Yeah, I, I don't need to, that one, to the issue.
Now, go be asked about all football demands.
But I'm curious with the, the doctor, with the psychological evaluation, is that something...
We have to do psyche valves for possible recurrence for the police department.
I pray there'll be these answers like that. Thank you. I didn't know that.
Is there, was there an accident with one of the highway trucks, or is it, is it a big built one?
Oh, no, no, no. Or the, the MAC has this, there's a, there's a chain-driven system in the bed that just used for the salt.
Does the...
Sand, like one of the stone that we did on the Conner Road. It had some issues with it, so Sean brought it up to have them, you know? That $4,000 doesn't go very far into a $100,000 car.
It just not, yeah.
So, but it's all looking at, which is good, because I'm sure they're using it right now.
Right. Further questions?
My, my only other question is, David, have you had a chance to look over the invoices for the segment six project, and are they ordered?
Yes. So I do, just to let you know, I do them as they come in.
Okay.
So, and then when Jackie puts the whole packet together, review it again before I sign the letter for it to vote in the tram.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ready to vote? All in favor of the two warrants, as they've been moved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions?
Aye.
Three oh one. Anything further to come before the board, before we, we're gonna intend to have an executive session about some pending litigation? If not, thank you all for coming. Hope you have a safe trip back to your domicile. See you later.